Hey, you're right. All the city council meeting with an executive session to order February 4th, 2025 at 7:00 PM. We are all here as a form. We did the flag salute in our workshop. We'll go right to the table of minutes. City Council Workshop Minutes, January 7th, 2025.
I approve the minutes, January 7th, 2025, City Council Workshop, as of this week.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion about the minutes? All in favor, say aye. Aye, aye. Any opposed? City Council Meeting Minutes, January 7th, 2025.
Who did approve the minutes, January 7th, 2025, City Council Workshop, where you're in the meeting, has presented?
A motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, aye. Any opposed? Financial Report, December 2024.
Yeah, that's halfway through our fifth full year. And then we can see it wasn't a super busy month, which was very good because at the end of the year, we took from monthly payroll possibly to bi-weekly payroll possibly. So we're configuring the whole system and all the folks to do that. It was a lot of time to be able to accomplish that. But we did, in out of the building fund, we issued our final payment for the City Hall event. So the overall construction costs were approximately $2.3 million for that expansion.
So how would we know that if you didn't say it?
That's why I have the extra number. And then our capital project fund, our water system improvement, funded by our geobond, official right here in the spring, and if you look at our ending fund balance for the capital project fund, so that's 280,000. I'm looking at probably about 260,000 is what we'll need to finish paying that. So we will get about 40,000 out of the water reserve to finish paying for that project. But out of an 18.6 million dollar project, being lost by 40,300. And then our congressional community project fund, that's that incubator. And so we're just waiting for B C D A, get going on schematics and get that project going. So those funds are just very, very earning interest. Our interest rates have started to drop just slightly. And so that's the new term we'll start seeing as interest rates are dropping. I would entertain any questions.
Any questions?
You put the, in the notes section for the garbage fund, that you wrote this for October, November. And that is out of this. We go from June to June, basically the.
So on June, yeah. So we're, we're okay. You know, we won't get a November invoice until December. And they had some system changes. And so Tony has been working on plan to get account numbers and everything all set up correctly. So that was the delay with October, which is cleaning up and making sure everything matching and cleaned up. But I wonder when October's invoice amount, you notice 150,000 versus November of 88,000. During the warm months, a lot of the majority of that is not for residential customers. It's a lot of the construction, those big construction dumpster boxes. So during the, the warm months, we had a lot of construction going on. And so that makes that fund seem like it's spending a lot. But once we start getting into November, it's back to kind of more than normal.
Correct. October, November was when we did the voucher again, Craig.
That was in October or was that October end of the?
It was split October, November.
No, it was like a.
Yeah, it was like it seemed.
It was, yeah. It was a partial one, a partial another. Yeah.
Middle to middle.
Yes.
And then I added into that.
Some of it, we didn't have all of the invoices in December yet, or, or that program, the voucher program.
But in the past, the voucher program runs about $20,000 to do it. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Per month.
With, yeah, with the new garbage increase in the software case.
So the expansion was only $2.3 million that we spent. I'm just gonna say it again. Like I said it last time, we didn't spend enough. We didn't build enough. We didn't build far enough. I still think we should have doubled that, but it's still a nice expansion. And I bet in 10 years, we're gonna be adding on to it again, but. That's my comment. I would like to have seen it built for 20 years and not for 10 years. It could have been, but. Anybody else have any questions? Okay, we're gonna go to the pre- pre-ranged presentation. So Sam Boardman, I got a confirmation from my wife, Sam Boardman was unable to do it today because the kids that were asked were absent yesterday and today. But we are lucky to have Wendy River and Fernanda, who, I'm gonna toot your horn a little bit. Fernanda is one of our ASB leaders. And she went on a trip and she put this slide presentation together to present to the council and whoever's watching online of the great trip that she had. And she didn't have any help from school that I'm aware of. So she did this all on her own and I'm super proud of her. And she's a sixth grader at Wendy River Elementary.
Teacher governor, he had that.
She had, well, she was invited to sit in, the only one that was invited to sit in Greg Smith's chair right when she walked in.
And look at her, she was green sharing on her own.
So are they able to see them online?
Yes.
Okay.
So. Too late, but I would be reading it. There is their work with the Senate chambers because she liked how big it was and how it looked. Maddie's favorite part was meeting Representative Smith because she liked that he was really kind and having colleagues do what he did. She also liked meeting Senator Nash because he explained what his job is. My favorite part was Representative Smith's chair, that was it. And also meeting Representative Smith and General because he was cool and fair and was to all of us. Okay, three things to remember. What is Yak? After talking with the group, I learned a little more about Yak's with Oregon City and Happy Valley. They are councils that come together as a group and work on solving a problem. One Yak wanted to stop any tobacco-related digs and another wanted to lower the amount of game and gun violence. Then she learned that what the, what Representatives deals and what their job. Their job is to check the bills and if they have proof to blow us, then they go to the senator's hands. Maddie learned what the bodies mean in the Senate chamber. Green me, green me, Yak threatens knowledge and the, and with more butter, they say they don't know what it means, but rejecting it. Which were all victorious by the Senate chamber, first representative. This is us just like first Representative Smith. In his office, I'm still in the Senate chambers and me on the chair. This was us in the library talking with the Yak members. It was really fun, but a really social activity. And this was us meeting Senator Nash. We would definitely come back. Thank you, City Boardman, City of Portland, Small School District, and Mr. Sheller for making this trip possible.
So a little side note, this Yak Youth Advisory Committee were all ninth graders to 12th graders. And I took these sixth graders there and not realizing, I, I kind of did. They ended up being, the four of them being split up and had to go into these various groups all by themselves and be with ninth and 12th graders and talk about their communities and what they would like to see and their concerns about it. And I got to think, if I was a sixth grader, would I like to have had my teacher go and throw me into a group with a lot of different people? And I think the comment they shared was, it was awkward. I thought it was weird, but they go, it was just awkward. But to see those four kids be able to get in with those high school students and those high school students who are future leaders of Oregon, they really are, take their arms around them and incorporate their thoughts and really respect what they had to say. It was just super cool and they did a really nice job. And I couldn't be prouder of them. They were really, really good kids there. And regardless of what people are saying about Greg Smith right now, he took really good care of these kids. When they walked into his office, they were number one and the adults were all number two. There were other mayors who were lined up waiting to see him. And he opened his door and said, come on in. And his assistants kept saying, hey, you got other people. He's like, you know what? I'll tell you when I'm done. And he took care of those kids. He listened to them. He listened to their questions. He explained to them. Even Senator Nash opened up his office, took those kids in there. He's a really new guy and he hasn't, I don't think, learned everything. But he explained their, his job and how that they can make the decisions and be a future leader in Oregon as well. So Fernanda took really charge of this. I'm super proud of her. Her parents should be really proud as well. Good job. And I give you a big hand again. Thank you. Good job. All right, so we'll go right to our next pre- pre-ranged presentation. Mike Aaron.
Okay, Mike, can you hear us?
I can. I'm not excited about following that act. Howdy y'all. My name is Mike Aaron. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Brandon, Amanda, I can see y'all sort of. And all the residents and visitors, it's a pleasure to be here with y'all. And that was a y'all. I am based in Austin, Texas. Please don't hold it against me. I am the partnerships manager for some routine. And I'm gonna make one quick admission. I am actually quite tired. I was up at 3:30 this morning, your time, taking a friend to surgery. We just didn't have an option on the date and I'm gonna stumble over a couple of words and I apologize in advance. God forbid I yawn if I do, I promise it's not the company. It is an honor to be here with you. Does anyone have any questions before I share my screen and give you my presentation? Excellent. Where is my? Zoom fail. Give me just a moment. Okay, can you see my screen? Can you see my presentation? You cannot see my presentation. Uh, one more try and.
Ta-da.
There we go. Excellent. And let me get back to it so I can actually see what I'm presenting. Good Lord, I cannot actually see it. I'm sorry. Give me just a moment.
Well, we can't either. It says you're started, but we're only seeing a black screen.
Fascinating. Okay. One more try. I've lost it. Give me just a moment. I promise you I practiced this. Tell you what, is it possible while I get myself organized for y'all to move on to one other thing?
Yeah.
Apologize for that.
Is that okay? Go on to the next one or then come back to them?
Sure. The next one. Pre- yes, pre-arranged presentation, shipping containers.
So again, we're just continuing the conversation about shipping containers. So probably playing. Oh, something, okay. Chrome's playing planning officials. And a couple of items I want to touch base on, so I, why we talked about shipping containers. What are some ways shipping containers are used? What are other committees doing? Kind of to next needs, next steps. Orelli Camero, our new planner one, I said, go find me some shipping container pictures off the web. Who knew? Oh my, there's like, you just Google it and you, when you do Google it and you get the images. I mean, it just went on and on and on. So I just, we borrowed some, we inserted them here. I love this one with the, kind of the workshop that you're seeing there. We currently allow shipping containers in Portland and commercial industrial zones for supplemental storage. Current requests that we have, kind of that have been out there are twofold. One for residential use for storage and then commercial use as an occupiable. And let me be clear, I got that term from Glenn. But he said that is for workforce, not sleeping. So this is not necessarily, I mean, we can talk about sleeping in them or using them to build homes, but initially, let's just see if we can get through some initial stuff to begin with. Some cool picture, a cool picture there of the application in a food pod facility. Brandon found a bunch of cities that had some code. I found a couple others. I didn't put them all in here. I just gave you a couple of examples of how you communities are doing it. So City of Portland's kind of pretty limiting. They look at a storage container, they, they view it as a, as a vehicle, which I thought was kind of interesting. City of Gladstone defines a portable storage container is a portable weather resistant commercially leased or rented receptacle designed in use for storage or shipment of personal property, building materials, or merchandise. It shall not include yard waste containers, construction debris containers or containers having a storage capacity less than 200 cubic feet. They defined it. Josephine County, again, some of these are cities, some of these are county. They define them as an intermodal structure, originally designed for transport. They say it shall not be used for human occupancy unless the interior of the unit has a floor ceiling minimum height of eight feet, nine inches. And they also say that all shipping identification shall be moved from the, removed from the walls of all intermodal structures. The next example I pulled was from the City of Clamott Falls. And I have to say, I really liked this one because it gave some flexibility. It also puts some of the decision-making elements on the planning commission. So there would be a public hearing. There would be an opportunity for a conversation. It would be a quasi judicial decision that somebody could then appeal to the planning commission. I thought it was interesting. They said they could not be permitted as a primary structure in your zones. Okay, they also say that, then they go on to say the planning commission may allow them to be used as a primary structure in two different zones as part of a conditional use permit with a required public hearing. So that's where the, where the, okay, we can talk about it, but we're gonna do it in a public hearing setting. We're gonna have some standards that are applicable and can you meet them? And then they say that they can be permitted as an accessory structure in any zone provided. And there's some standards there that are applicable. And you use some more pictures. I mean, it looks like there's a sheet shed. I don't know what the white one is. Looks like a, maybe an ADU and then somebody's got some kind of design studio. I don't know if that's a barber shop, beauty shop, or some small business in somebody's backyard. So a couple of things that are current code that are applicable. So we do have design standards in our residential zone. And until we change the development code, these would still be applicable. There are architectural features that are applicable. There's some standards around accessory structures. It says that the accessory structure shall be of a compatible and complementary nature to the primary structure and be consistent with the detailed design criteria identified listed there on the, on the right-hand side. And if they're under 200 square feet, they show me at least one of the design criteria identified. So we have some limitations. If somebody came into the residential zone and said, I really want to use a storage, a shipping container as my storage, for storage in my backyard. They'd have to, under the current development code, they'd have to figure out how to comply with this. So it would have to be painted. It may have to have faux siding on a portion of it. It may have to have a roof structure on it. So I, I, people want to have the conversation about shipping containers because of the cost savings. But there's some trade-offs here because of the current development code standards and would they be applicable? I think they would be. And then how do you comply with that? Also, in our commercial industrial zone, there are also some building kind of restrictions or, I don't want to say restrictions, there's some design standards that would be applicable. Building mass, pedestrian scale. But again, most of the application in commercial industrial zones has been for storage. And so it's been less an issue. And, and I think that those items that are here would probably not prohibitive, but still applicable. So I, I don't have all of the answers yet, but I'm, I'm trying to figure out how to answer the questions I'm hearing you ask and figure out if there's a path that we can begin to carve to move forward to address the requests that we've received. I also provided, and Glenn's available on Zoom, but he provided some information about building code inputs. So if you're doing storage only, and whether it's be residential or commercial, a single unit unmodified, interoperable shipping container is allowed. Those aren't my words, those are building code words, okay? They say that the only allowable modification, if you're using it for storage, is you can do no more than one penetration per linear feet of wall, not greater than six inches in diameter or not greater than 16 square inches. So basically you're, you can put a, for ventilation, you can, you can put a vent in it to allow for air movement in and out. But if you're using it for storage, that's, that's all you can do. If you want it to be occupiable space, and remember the, the definition about occupiable, that's not living, that's working. It has to be evaluated by an Oregon licensed design professional. So in my conversation with Glenn, it was like, yep, they can use it. It is a building input. But it has to be engineered and that engineering has to be stamped by an Oregon licensed engineer. So if somebody were to come in and they were to propose this, it's gonna be occupiable space. It's not just a matter, I'm gonna use a storage container, I'm gonna put a window in it and we're gonna, we're gonna put it in a day's food pot. That's not gonna work. That storage container would have to go through an engineering process and be stamped by an engineer to show. And then from the permitting's perspective, it still has to meet a lot of the same permitting requirements. Structural, and which means there's a foundational requirement, there's electrical plumbing, mechanical, if applicable. So if you're, if you're gonna plant it and you're gonna power in it for that workspace, then you're gonna have to get all of those same permits like any other space would have to obtain. So anyway, that, that's kind of what I've put together. I'm happy to answer questions and again, Glenn's over here. So questions, if you have any. If not.
It's basically given us guidance. Like, was there something that sounded, wow, that, that lines, that concept that you shared? Like ask about the planning commission? Yes, that's mainly it. Try and get some guidance.
I got a comment. I've kind of said this before. I personally cannot say no to a storage container. If every day I have to drive by the Health District bus, I cannot say no to that. I, yeah, that's permitted, but I, I, I'm just gonna go out there and say, I cannot say no to a storage container if we're gonna allow a bus to do business that doesn't move. That's all I need to say.
I, I think when we first started this conversation, it was really, it's wanting to know if someone was gonna physically live in it. And then as months went on and meetings went on, we found out, you know, that wasn't the case. It was actually for a very specific reason. And so as the definition, we get more information, I guess. And I think it's better as we hear more. Personally, it gets better. As far as like getting proper wording on codes and definitions and, you know, maybe this means one thing to one person, but really doesn't mean that, you know, when you talk about occupiable.
Occupiable space.
You know, it's not the same definition as living in it, so that now it starts to make more sense. So, and I think that's really, I think when we got our first meeting, that was the biggest concern. It's like, oh, is somebody gonna live in this? You know, and I don't think anybody was okay with that. Now, we have way more information to make a better difference.
Okay, Glenn can clarify for me. I believe the sp, the term you would be looking there for somebody living in it is habitable space. So, yeah.
And I, I kind of like this Clamott Falls piece because I think it opens up the possibility for habitable.
It could over time. It, it could move that way.
Be if that person who brings their idea and their engineer-stamped plan to a hearing with what it would look like and everything. I think that it opens up the door for something that might be in a more reasonable price point for people. So I, I like the information.
I don't know. Like, I like Clamott Falls, but at the same time, I don't know. Every person that wants to put a shipping container should have to come to planning commission to go through a process like that. They should be able to just pull a permit for it, permit gets inspected, stuff like that. I think going to like planning commission every single time you want to do that.
I think that would be a reasonable, I think there'd be a reasonable tier. In other words, if it's simply, I'm gonna do it for storage in my backyard. Well, here's the standard you have to meet, cut and dry. And if you can't meet them, then, then we can bump it to a planning commission. If it's occup, what's the word again? Occupable? If it's occupiable space, then I think that does require, I think that would require the planning commission here.
I can see that.
Yeah.
That makes a lot more sense, but that's not, that's not what it says, so.
This is not, we're not going to plan a mission if it's the primary structure in the neighborhood commercial. So instead of it being a secondary ADI, what do they call those? ADI or whatever?
ADU.
ADU home, it would be the actual home on that lawn, for example.
And neighborhood commercial in this sense is a commercial use in a neighbor, in a residential area. Yes.
My other, with this development code, are design standards. Design standards are great. But I also don't think necessarily need a roof on it. You need more footers and eaves and everything else for something to stand in the storage. But right now, I am much, very much a fan of painting it, blending it into your building that's already there, something like that. If it's gonna be sitting by itself, make sure it blends in somehow. It doesn't look like a normal shipping container that's beat up, crappy, rusted out, has numbers all over it. And also don't like hideous colors, but and for the design standard, of painting it, just like enough for me, if it's gonna be a storage container, you need to put extra siding and stuff on it.
Is there a reason why we don't have the same conversation about hickory sheds? Is it because of the size?
I think that's a really fair question there, Keeper. And I would say that if, if, if I, I think I'm hearing, I'd go forth and promulgate some changes. I think I'm hearing that generally. Any changes to the development code would go to planning commission first and then come here as adoption. And I think this is a development code change. This is a municipal code change because it's about development. I think it would open the door and have that conversation about how we approve accessory structures. And because I do think that we have similar issues with hickory sheds. But again, I sit on that fence of, it's dug on it, it's your backyard. What, what role does the city have telling you what you should put in there? And yet our current development code clearly said, oh, if you're gonna put a accessory structure in. And yet our current development code clearly said, oh, if you're going to put an accessory structure in, here's the standard you have to meet. So where is that line between it's my backyard, can I do what I want versus. But your neighbors have to look at it, you know, that it, 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 stalling is that, is that. Intersection between I have private property and I have rights and I need to be a good neighbor. And I think that's what we have to figure out.
Because I can't build a ten-foot fence.
Right. Well, you could, but you have to get a building permit and and, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of hoops to get, probably, if you have a fence.
So.
Not if I built it.
I thought somebody got here for maybe you said.
I just put it up.
That I can't, if I have a lot that's vacant, I cannot put. A container on it, that I have to have a primary structure there first.
Absolutely. Doesn't, any kind of accessory use is not authorized unless the primary use is in place.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a developing, so, so. Um, yeah, I, I own a lot. I want to build a house on it. Before I build a house, can I put my shop on first? I can't. But the way the development code is written, you have to put the primary structure on before I can authorize the accessory structure.
So this is basically a planning commission issue, right?
I think it starts at planning commission, but, but I, I don't think we go there. It's all I feel comfortable that what. Might eventually get vetted in here. I mean, I don't want to go through all that work. You guys are going to say no in the end, so. That's sorry. A lot to do. I don't have a lot of time for that.
So I have a quick question. Um, how do Amazon deliverable homes fit into this? Because they're in the same kind of thing. Buy a thirty-five thousand dollar house, they pour a piece of concrete and out it comes, pops up and. Spread it out.
Yeah, good question. Um, I think that's more a question for Glenn than for me. What I would say is that, you know, back in the day, we were homes from Sears.
Sure.
And.
And you can still order a log home.
Yeah, and I would say that if you can go through the process and get a de- a development review permit through my office and provide a plot plan and show that it meets the design standards. Then I would approve it and it would go to Glenn on the building permit side and he would review it for whatever would be applicable. And so like a manufactured home. Uh, has a manufactured home setup permit. We don't actually issue structural, mechanical, plumbing, and electrical because that all happens where it's constructed. We are just simply assuring that it's getting plugged, oops, s- sited and plugged in correctly. So if the Amazon home comes and it is. Pre-inspected, then there's probably some setup. If it doesn't come pre-inspected, then it's going to have to go through all the same building permit processes. So not knowing enough about that home, I, I don't have answered any better than that.
I don't know anything more than just plugging it into Google and.
Yeah.
But I think that it falls into this camp. A bit.
We'll start playing around with some rough language. We'll try to keep it simple. We'll keep it focused on residential and occupiable space. We'll find where those things can happen. It'll be a development code amendment. It might take a couple of months before it gets through. Me, planning commission to you, but not carrying any bait. No, 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 not at all. Are you going to put anything in there about habitable?
No, I, I don't think I'm for it, but.
Habitable.
Habitable, yeah. I don't, I don't think we're there yet. I think we're still.
Exactly. I think when I feel this starts.
I think we start with, I, I'm not uncomfortable with that. I think we start with occupiable. We, we maybe test run it. We see how it works. And then we see what the next, I, I, there are folks in town, I will tell you, there are folks in town who are interested in. In storage container conversion as habitable space. There are people who have that interest. But I, I don't disagree. This is new and we take it one step at a time. Okay. Appreciate your time very much. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. And Mike, are you, how, how are you doing? You all good now?
I think I'm good. I think I'm going to just try and share this not as a presentation, but just share my, uh. My screen. Um. Can you see that?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Uh, it went bad when I, when I went into presentation mode, so I'm just not going to do that. Um, the briefest of context at, uh, the League of Cities Conference in October last year, I met Mayor Kiefer and Brandon. Um, so that's where this whole thing came up. Uh, I am the partnership manager for Subroutine. We are an AI company. Uh, we are, and that means we do AI. We don't do websites. We don't do search engine optimization. We do AI. Um, we're headquartered in Portland, founded in twenty twenty-two, and we are focused on positively impacting how residents and staff access. City information and improving the quality of those resources. Our founders are Jeremy Stanley and Greg Bistrucha. Uh, together and separately, they've helped build, run, and secure some of the most used websites and apps. That includes. Uh, Facebook, which is now Meta, Pinterest, Robinhood, and Medium. Um, little more context. These were my first computers. First one was a little Coleco quarterback. Uh, it was a blast because it's all we had. Uh, in nineteen eighty-one, I got an actual Atari. Um, my favorite game was Space Invaders, and if anyone cares, my high score was, uh, over thirty-five thousand. Uh, my first real job, I had an IBM mainframe. And things have changed. Um, this is how we interact with the world today. We have little computers in our pockets. Uh, that have more power than, like, tens of thousands of times more power than what we sent astronauts to the moon with. Um. And increasingly, it's how we interact with government. Uh, we hold our meetings this way. We get information about our. Cities and communities. We pay our bills. Uh, we get our permits. But not for everybody. Uh, if you don't have a computer, if you don't have easy access during work hours. Uh, if you don't know the right terminology or how to ask the right question, uh, if you've got, if you work out in the fields, if you've got poor, um. Uh, signal during work hours, if you've got a disability and you have difficulty using a computer, if websites are just confusing. Uh, enter AI. AI is changing this. Um. An AI chat agent can offer twenty-four seven access. For questions either outside work hours or if your work hours are outside. Say for the quarter of, uh, Boardman folks who. Either work in agriculture or forestry or, uh, hunting or fishing. Uh, your language of choice is Spanish, like the sixty percent of Boardman residents who speak Spanish at home. Um, it works in natural language if you don't happen to speak government jargon. Um, we're not doing this yet with Boardman. We're evaluating. Uh, but we have opportunity to do by text, uh, or by phone, interactive voice response, and it'll give you the exact same information that you can get in a little chatbot. Um, make it easier for those who are accessing remotely or poor signal. What we hope this will do for Boardman is A, help you improve your resources. So you'll actually have an understanding of, uh, what questions are being asked and what responses are being given. This is going to be based on your own resources. This is not going out and, and searching the web. Um, our hope is that that will, uh, as your resource gets better, it'll help expand. Um, the folks who live there engagement with the website and with the services. Uh, we hope it'll save Amanda and Tony and Maria's time and energy. We hope it'll give you a little bit of cachet for economic development. Um, and this is going to become more important as budgets continue to tighten. Uh, and then as more is being pushed to state and local level from the federal level, which is happening almost as I present. Um, a couple of other things that we are in process of is accessibility tools to expand who can use government websites. Uh, especially for those with such as, uh, visual and cognitive disabilities. Um, there is an ADA, uh, deadline coming up, April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-seven, for cities that are smaller than fifty thousand. Um, to make your, uh, website usable for, given a, kind of variety of, uh. Guidelines for web accessibility. Um, and making PDF searchable, which is actually surprisingly difficult. Um, I think y'all probably have a pretty good idea what it'll look like. It's going to be a little box in the bottom, and when you click on it, it pops open and you can ask questions. Um, this will be manageable from an admin panel that, uh, at least Amanda will have access to and I'll help her, uh, work through. And this is just an example of, um. One of the web accessibility guideline tools and how we can help make, um. Websites better for those who have difficulties with, uh, visual acuity, cognitive, et cetera, et cetera. Um, I wanted to keep it short. I was asked to keep it short and, and leave you time for questions. So that is. Um, my presentation.
So does AI answer the chat question?
It does.
And it uses our development code and our pieces of information and those things too?
It depends on what you upload. It's not, like I said, it's not going out and searching the web. It is only using materials that you ask it to use.
I think it's super exciting. I, I, I mean, I. If it can make it easy, just searching, uh, the, the city website can be difficult. And if I can type some search words in there and boom, it pops open or answers my question. Um, I hope it works better than ChatGPT, but, uh. I'm super excited that, that it only searches our web base, our web, or whatever we have for our. I don't know, server or whatever, which is, makes us responsible, make sure everything is updated. So I, I think it was super cool. Who else have any comments or questions?
I've used chats like that often. And there are occasions when you have to wait for someone to come on and answer a question because the question is too difficult for the. System.
I am not going to lie to you. It is not perfect. It will sometimes return, sorry, I don't have an answer to that, or. It won't find it on the page because, um, the phrasing is different. Um, but what I can tell you is the models are getting better. Daily. Um, the models that we have didn't exist six months ago. So we, we're new in the government space, which is why we're working with y'all on this. And, um, you're helping us to learn more about it and, and, uh, we'd love to see how it goes.
Like this, um, would this collect, um, user data? Like how often it's being used and who and when, like the peak times, you know, just general and being collected?
It will, it will not collect user data. It will collect the questions and the responses. Um, there are times when if somebody is asking a question, they might put their own data in. And we, we can't help that, but what I can tell you is two things. It doesn't go anywhere. It stays in the, um, admin panel and the only person that has access to it is the person that you designate. Um, I, we have access to it because we're on the backend. But for example, I assume that would be Amanda, who could see the questions and any information that somebody put in. The other is that we and, um, all of the vendors we use are what is known as SOC two compliant. That stands for Service Organization, um. Control, and it is a compliance framework that, um. Make sure that security, privacy, confidentiality, availability, and processing integrity. Are aligned with, um, general principles. It's actually put forth by the American Institute of CPAs. And it's the, it's the standard these days. And we do not use any vendors that are not SOC two compliant. We are SOC two compliant. Type one, that means at a single point in time and we're in the process of being evaluated, um, over the, over a course of time. But no, your, your data goes nowhere.
So it, it isn't stored like saying like how cookies are with your, with your internet browsing?
Uh. I, no, no, it only goes in, it only goes into the backend. And only y'all have access to it. It is stored.
It is stored. So would it be stored on the person's personal computer that's using it or on?
No. There is, so if you use ChatGP, especially the paid version. Um, it has a memory, or you can tell it to use a memory. Um, this does have a memory. Um, to be completely honest, I don't know, um, how it works from the individual computer user standpoint. If that's a, if that's a critical issue, I would be happy to find that out and let you know.
I was just curious if it stores that, you know, because I mean, the cookies so that you could access the data faster, you know, and then. Um, but over time, you do need to clear that out or it's going to bog your computer down. And so that's why I was just wondering if it's going to store that data on some of the personal computer. Looking at, go in and constantly. Clear the cache.
Got it. Uh, no, it will not. It does not store that on the personal computer. It stores that on our site and then it recognizes who's asking the question. Or not on our site, but in the, in the cloud server that we use.
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
So are we? More or less any yes or no who wants this for the city?
What are you looking for, Brandon?
There's an action item for that.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
All right. So we are. At the, uh, report only chamber, VCDA. We have that on your. This packet. We'll move right on to action items. Ordinance one, twenty twenty-five. Amending Boardman zoning map, BPA transmission line easement reduction. Looks like we need to read it into the record.
I'm going to approve the reading by title and we have ordinance one dash two thousand twenty-five and we're going to amend the boardman zoning map producing the BPA transmission easement. Subdistrict and adding land to the commercial zone south of the BPA transmission line. On the subject property and land to the commercial, tourist commercial zone north of the BPA transmission line on the subject property.
Okay, we need a staff member to read the title of ordinance.
We need a second and a vote first.
I didn't think we did that.
She just made a motion. I'll second that.
Okay, so we motion and then we vote? And then we go to step two. Okay? Uh, we have a second. Is there any question or discussion? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Can you oppose? Okay, we go to step two. Read the title of ordinance, please.
Yeah, ordinance one dash two zero two five, amending Boardman zoning map, BPA transmission line easement reduction.
The title. You didn't write the whole thing.
Go ahead, thank you.
Okay.
Uh.
You, you, you're having a gun.
Oh, now you got it. Ordinance one dash two zero two five and the ordinance to amend the Boardman zoning map producing the BPA transmission easement subdistrict. And adding land to the commercial zone south of the BPA transmission line on the subject property and adding lands of commercial. Tourist commercial zone north of the, of the BPA transmission line on the subject property.
Right, so we need a, to adopt it.
I move to adopt ordinance one dash two thousand twenty-five. And ordinance to amend the Boardman zoning map producing the BPA transmission easement subdistrict and adding land to the commercial zone south of the BPA transmission line on the subject property. Adding land to the commercial tourist commercial zone going with the BPA transmission line on the subject property.
Second, the motion is second. If there's any discussion. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Can you oppose? Okay, we need to go to the action items resolution four dash twenty twenty-five surplus property.
So this is simply asking to surplus. We have three sections. Um, the one is surplus from the old city shop. The second is the, we are going to be removing the old water building. And so that is surplusing all the pumps and pipes and. Motors. Motors.
De-commission.
De-commission, thank you. There's like electronic components in there. And then the third thing is we have the old glass. That etching and that etching. The surplus.
Do we have any, any interested in those things? You know, some of the chief surpluses, it's spot caring as planned.
Yeah, there, there's a few, like the phones for sure. We, uh, contacted the company and they're, they're interested in our phones.
So I had talked about. So I had talked about donating, possibly donating. Like the desks, the etchings, things like that that were maybe usable to the booster club. To try and auction off and raise funds for the kids and the students in Morbid. It'd be something similar to I, what I believe I own does to help fund their school. They redonate old. Desks and stuff like that. And then they auction it off every year and then they redonate it back and just keep doing it over and over again. So. I just thought maybe some of that stuff would go well with the school. Maybe there's some people there that could use it or just. Find a way to donate some money to the mission club.
Yeah, and I think the way the resolution is written, it's a nonprofit, so you have to work. And that is a possibility, sure. We don't want to back though.
Well, like, like me personally, like you could probably buy some of that stuff as recently changed.
Oh.
Cool stuff, but that's what I do. Every purpose of all the stuff.
I imagine the one glass that's my only care is living, huh?
It'll be our new front window.
Oh, I was looking at it for that.
I move to approve a resolution four dash twenty, uh, resolution declaring city of Boardman personal property is. Motion in a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution five twenty twenty five repealing city of Boardman fee schedule.
Hey, Amanda.
So the fee schedule that has historically been adopted was created as an internal reference document for staff to use. We are not set up in a way to have a master fee schedule. We are working towards that in a lot of the code changes and the language changes that we're doing. Um, so we are not. Asking to repeal any of the fees. The fees are not going anywhere because they are already in documents such as the codes and ordinance and resolutions. What we are asking to repeal is that fee schedule that has been adopted that was. Originally an internal reference document. That we need to repeal that so that we can start moving towards the master fee schedule. Any questions?
Well, it's clear as night. That's okay. We gotta get rid of the schedule that the fees stay in place.
Correct. We are not.
So we make a new thing.
We are not getting rid of any of the fees. The fees are still there informed in the original documents. And what we're doing is going to be pulling those fees out and creating a master fee schedule. The, the one exception to that. And I, I probably should both go back and really truly clarify this, but I believe when we adopted that fee schedule like two years ago. We put the business license fees in it. So at the point in time that you adopt the business license. Ordinance, we will also adopt a resol- we're not gonna put the fees in the ordinance because we're trying to get away from that. But we will also have you adopt those business license fees. I don't know if it will be as the first action with the master fee schedule because I don't know that will be there at the same time. But we will have to, those are fees that we will have to. Capture.
Any other questions? Alright, so we're, I first, we just need a motion, right?
I moved to.
Excuse me.
I move to approve resolution five dash twenty twenty five, resolution repealing.
Yeah, motion in a second. Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, so we're down to action item South Main Street design approval. Mike, please.
Okay, so Mike has graciously come all the way over.
Again?
In the snow.
In the snow. And so this, this will take a, a field trip at some point. But these designs were the ones we presented at the community forum. And these are the corrections based on the input. So the input was no trees, so we left the grass. The input was, oh, they, we don't, we are not showing the. Lamps, right? We don't have pictures of the lamps.
Uh, no, we don't have lamp. There's, there's lamps pictured on the three D images, but they don't represent the. Old style openers that would be installed. There's a bus stop on the southbound Main Street in front of N A P A, otherwise known as, wait, wait, Nampa.
You guys didn't know that is either.
I call it N A P A.
Thank you.
Just an acronym, not a name.
Anyway.
Yeah.
Word.
That's why, because my wife says she's old too, but she said it's Napa.
Because she can get with the times.
So the big ones are the trees. Those have been eliminated. And then.
And they did have specific, they wanted water, they wanted the flags and they wanted power with the lamps.
Yep.
On the lamp.
On the lamps, I think.
Yes, that's happening.
And zero trees. Are there really?
Yeah, you can plant a tree. The irrigation system will be there.
Of course, myself would buy a tree, plant a tree instead.
Sweet. I don't have to have the city's permission?
And the bus, the bus was, uh, on here is accurate. And that was in connection with the moral county transit. They came in, we had a discussion about specific location. Very good feedback from the new.
Transit director.
Trent, thank you, gentlemen.
We talked to them about northbound bus stop and their recommendations to leave it out until. The lawn property develops since, yeah. Uh, and then you would better cite a bus stop. Depending on how that period develops.
Correct.
So, but yeah, took there and put into consideration what you don't see is the water and sewer and stormwater improvements that are all gonna go in before these roads. Get constructed.
It's curved and sidewalks, some of those.
So.
Yep.
What, what was the?
Curved sidewalks all the way down south main.
Yeah.
Um.
Not this nature of things.
What's also different on these figures here is there's no interim road because. There's no curb betters and sidewalks over here on the first street because those are the responsibility of the, the developers to construct. So. This is really representative of what's gonna be the scope of the construction project. Um, so. Well, you know, when this stuff develops, the city's requiring that they put curb betters and sidewalks and, and like, uh. Streetlights in as, as, you know, so they need the development code.
This is just food for thought. I, I know we were talking about where there's intersections. We might wanna make sure that we build. When we put power, that we have ability that if something was gonna need power at an intersection, we have the infrastructure. Already there that we may not have, just might make it easier, but for some reason. We had to do something. At, you know, Wilson and some of our other inters- just a thought. And my other thought was, is. If we're, while we're doing this, we might put in some plan on how, what way are we gonna be. Setting up flags as we do our Main Street. How are we gonna have little posts on the? On the, on the.
Light post.
Light posts or are they gonna be in the ground? However, we might wanna think about those, but those are all things that I. Probably, I don't, not discuss today, but we might wanna make sure that we're thinking about.
Yeah, and the, oh, the flags will all be on the posts.
Yeah, how you get up there?
How are we gonna get up there?
How do you get up there? Well, yeah, because usually aren't there kids that usually put those?
The boy scouts.
But we have, we have youth that put the flags on, so we might wanna think about how they're not.
What way are they gonna be able to? Tall that you couldn't. Reach out.
Not, well, it depends. I mean, and they probably shouldn't be using them. They probably shouldn't use that.
But yeah, oh, no, that.
So they wouldn't, they wouldn't be, they wouldn't be able to do that, I mean.
Apparently, they're not very tall at all.
Yeah, we, yeah, we'll.
Just some thoughts. I mean, those are some things that we have going on that we might wanna think about that as we're going along here and.
Because right now it's the sporting team to put it out, the Jolly Roger for different games and it's the Boy Scouts. To put it out for the holiday, like, you know, the American.
It's actually, it's just the church now.
Oh, it's just the church.
The youth, the youth of the church.
Well, the savings of the trees in public works might gamble to help, you know.
And they, they don't have.
I'd like to touch on like installing permissions for future things at intersections. It's.
Yeah. No, busy.
It's really difficult, I, I guess, to project what the need is for some potential infrastructure in intersection. You know, it's like, let's look at our crystal ball. And. Try and determine what infrastructure is needed. Can we can put in some thought into that?
Maybe it's just thought on, and being aware of that so that we don't like get everything done and go. We should have done that.
Like, one thing that I can see that would be very beneficial, that would be relatively cost. Effective to put in now would just be spare conduits.
Now, I thought a little bit more of a spur.
You know, like whole three, two inch, one to conduit or something. So you're not having to dig up the fresh asphalt.
And that's kinda what we're, I, I think Ethan and I was talking about and I was talking to, uh, his family. Um, just some, you know, trying to. Think outside the box a little bit just to make, just to make our job a little bit easier because we're not gonna get everything. But if there's some things that we can get. To help us in the future. Why not? If it's gonna, if that's gonna be a cost effective, we already have everything for up. And what could we put in there? Whether that be. We already have fiber already going down Main Street.
Well, we're gonna run into conflicts with the fiber. Both on the east side and the west side.
I was wondering if that was.
Because all those, all of that conduit, fucking lots of it. Is right underneath where you wanna put like a. Tree light foundation. Or maybe a catch basin for storm drain. Or something of that nature. So it's.
We get to move that? Why not just run the same part?
No, it's, it's. So the, there's, within the franchise agreement you have with those utilities. They're required to move those utilities upon request by the city. What the franchise agreement doesn't have in it is a timeline associated with how soon those utilities have to move those. As you say, need a construction project timeline, city has. So more often than not. Um. The. Construction project usually just modifies their design to accommodate for the. In-ground utilities. It's not ideal, but it's. It's something that we face a lot.
And we ran into that with the company that. Was not even connected with the pipe over there that.
Movement.
Yeah.
Yeah. Movement's also.
But that is, that is one of the benefits of doing that right away that we're working on because it would state that in there a specific time. So.
I still think it's super cool because we're building it on our own.
Yep.
And I, that's gonna be something I think Gordon's gonna be able to be proud of. For years to come, that we as a city.
So we can definitely put in some spare conduits, no problem. This is easy to do.
Whatever.
Um, and I would like to caveat and say, you know, even though we're gonna bid this project. If something comes up, we can add it via change order. We can have it be an addendum when we're out to bid and we say, you know, if it's a big ticket item, we can add things later on. It's not like this is that young.
But, but we really do rely on Mike because it, as you just heard, we finished the, the project. And we only, that eighteen million or whatever, and it was forty thousand over and that was during COVID prices. I mean. He really does such a good job with that. And so we fully trust, like when he comes out and he does the figures, they're really spot on.
Yeah, I have a question. So. Do you, considering how, I, I don't know how old Main Street was compared to some of the other roads here. So the reason why I bring this up is because of Columbia Avenue. Do you anticipate any issues like what we ran into with Columbia Avenue holding up? Holding projects up or extending it or just costing more money or, because that, I mean, you know as well as I do that it was, it was a big problem. Um, and it just got worse and it bettered on private.
How long do you think, how do you, you want?
I was just saying, like, do you, I, we don't have to really discuss it. I'm just saying, like, do you anticipate the same kind of issues that that road has?
No, I don't.
Um, and why do we think that? Just because it doesn't have near as many of the. Water or the pipes that.
The water lines that we replaced were a large contribution to those delays in that project. Um. I'd say that's just a piece of the problem. There was other things that. Were problems. In, uh, that project. But the procurement process for this project will be the same. And it is, you know, following Oregon law for. Municipals procure contractors, which is a low bid environment.
Mm-hmm.
So we'll go out, have a bid and we'll bid this project. The person with low bid. Will, will be awarded. And so that's the risk associated with Oregon law. And these projects, it's not always. The best outcome.
Well, I don't necessarily win. So I guess what I'm talking about is not necessarily. The, the contractor. I'm talking about like all of a sudden we open up the road and we got a bunch of stuff under there that we didn't.
No, I, that's. I, I would say that's very low risk just because. For a couple reasons, um, I mean, we know where the waters and sewer pipes are. Uh, we did survey locates. It's, it's surveyed, so. We know with fairly. Good confidence what's under the ground.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that doesn't mean you're gonna run into stuff that you don't know about.
I, yep, I will just hear yourself. Okay. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. We're excited.
I, me too. We're, we're going for, for the advertising.
Don't quit.
At the end of February, so just in a few weeks.
Grab us, if you ever want to.
We're going to be.
What planet are you on?
I think that was the big discussion. It would be easier on maintenance, but. I mean, we live kind of in a desert, so it'd be nice to have some. Naturally, a pretty shake.
Business of those areas.
So other than once a year, how often we push sidewalk out there and be like, I'd like to shake.
Well, I, I think that there's a whole growing culture of people like to do more walking and. But not back and forth to work.
So we need a, a, a motion for South Main Street design approval.
I move to approve the design of the South Main Street project that's presented.
I'll second that.
Motion in a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We need a motion for a subroutine.
So.
To proceed.
Yep, so what it is, is this is, I say.
I can save, I can save Mike.
Yeah. Hey, we got a nice motel here. You can stay.
I don't know. They might be booked up though.
Um, so this is subroutine. This is a, a new venture for them. They are, they are new to government entities and they're doing this for. So, so it is zero cost. It is, um, I think the contract was for how many years?
It's probably six months.
Six months and then goes up like.
And we'll see how it goes.
Correct. His, his process is even as long as it was, it's always been zero cost. Because it's new and he's trying to get into, they're trying to get into the government.
And they're using us as a guinea pig as well.
Correct.
So keep that in mind, like they're using us as much as we're using them.
Yeah, it's a pilot program.
Thanks.
So after six months of the contract, we have to pay for it?
No, nope. That has been kind of the initial thing. We've gone back and forth and. It's always gonna be.
So that was my question.
So then I move to approve city staff to continue engaging with subroutine for their services and develop a service program.
One more question.
Yeah.
One more question.
So you. Essentially, you won't determine what information they are able to.
Yes, she is, Amanda's been doing the.
We, we tell them what we want indexed. Anything that we have on the website is included in that. So. Part of the work that I have been doing, cleaning up the website and making it easier to navigate. I've been doing with this project in mind, like what makes it more AI accessible essentially because like you said, PDFs are not searchable. So all of our PDFs, which is all of our documents, all of our public work standards, our, um. Our development code, our, like, just everything. It's all PDFs. So I have been going through and trying to get as much of that into the body of the website versus the PDF document. So those are kind of the things that I'm doing on. The backside, trying to prepare for this implementation. So. That's what it would be searching is the stuff that we have on there and indexed.
That you would prefer, that you would, that you would put into their system.
They, so they insert their code into our website, I don't insert anything into their stuff. So they actually come to us versus me going to them, if that makes sense.
It does, I'm just more so concerned with, with the confidential information that we may have, that we don't. That we would restrict that.
Yeah, we don't have anything confidential on the website, everything that we have on the website is public facing.
Any other discussion? Hey, we're ready for a vote. Uh, all papers say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? I'd like to thank the individual for, uh, for public comment for waiting, everyone here, sorry, it's so long. Uh, Sabrina Rock.
I'm ready to state up on behalf of Rock Enterprises' Mayor and Council member. On July nineteenth, twenty twenty four, an accident occurred, blood in the lead dock of the building with two inches of raw sewage. We were contacted by Rock Prep. At the, approximately ten AM to come out, remediate, uh, the damage, our crews were there within one hour. The sewage got underneath the existing floors as well as the old vinyl flooring underneath it, both layers had been removed. The insulation of the walls were damaged. We have done this type of cleanup before several times. To the point of replacing the floors, when we, we presented our initial bill. We were advised by the city personnel that they were not responsible for the bill that we had. And that we had to chase it through the insurance. At no point. Was the term insurance company mentioned. This work was performed, performed approximately eight months ago, and we have yet to see any reimbursement. As we've been continued to be dragged through the mud. Further, we have stored all of the furniture in a climate controlled trailer to revert, prevent further damage during this time. We have sought legal, legal counsel and we understand, while you may be close to the resolution, but the insurance company, this matter is not resolved. As a courtesy to the City of Boardman. This is to inform you that unless we're paid in full by Friday, February seventh, we're going to file a suit against the City of Boardman for legal obligations to Rock Enterprises next week. We need to be, make it clear that the City of Boardman was the entity that contacted us and is responsible for this bill. The total amount owed at this time is thirty-six thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fifty cents. This statement is out of courtesy to the City of Boardman and the City Council, eight months is too long to wait. Thank you.
Right, thank you very much. Reports, please report. Is it still over? Uh, it's not, but we can allow it, I mean. You just, just, you're supposed to fill this out, but go ahead, hold this right here, and you can just state your name. And, uh. We all know who's our lead architect.
Lead architect, four nine one, northeast Columbia. And I'm, uh, here to talk about, uh, what, uh, Rock Enterprises and. City of Boardman and the accident that happened in July. Uh, eighteenth. Uh, this last year. And. Now, it, it was a tragedy that, uh. What happened to that building, but. Um, we were filled with raw sewage and with that, you had to take all your. Uh, all your furnishings, all your computers, everything has to be washed down. You can't take a risk that later on. Uh, somebody's in there breathing and you have problems, which is a very serious thing. I gotta tell you, uh, the city reacted super, Brandon called me up immediately. Uh, Ralph came down, they were on it, they got contacted, Rock. Very, uh, uh, they were in and out of there and knew much to do the next steps all the way through. Couldn't ask for a better response, because if it would have gone another. We walked in there and had been there overnight and, and it was so humid. And, uh, you could tell it's just a, not a healthy place to be. And, um. They, they brought in their trailer, we were able to salvage all their files. Uh, but it's put a hardship on, eight months is a long time. It, cause it's like you just walk, walk away, people were telling me, are you retired, or? You know, we have lost business, we'll never get that money back. But, I'm looking to try to get them paid, there's no reason that, that. That, uh, the contractor shouldn't be paid, there's three insurance companies. That have just bounced this thing around. I have counsel. And we're going to make some headway here shortly, but. Shouldn't have to come to that. What, one of the problems was that there was a non, uh, non, hold harmless agreement. Um, in the insurance between your contractor and the city, child, the city not responsible. So, all your citizens, no matter if they fell in the hole out there. The city was not responsible. And that, I think that should be looked at when you do, you, you're hiring in the insurance. Well, insurance, uh, industry, I think is broken anyway. But. But, um. Uh, I just thought I'd make you aware, yeah. Couldn't ask more from Brandon, no, Ralph, they were absolutely competitive. Thank you.
You bet, um, all I, all I know that I directed to say is, I know that we're taking a look at it. Unfortunately, insurance companies are involved in that. And hopefully we can make that. Happen sooner than later to be able to.
Appreciate it. Oh. One other thing on your strategic plan. Uh, you might put in senior housing and, not, yes. Uh, uh, nursing home and, uh, assisted living, I didn't see it on there.
It's identified.
It's on there.
Uh, I don't know if it's in that document specifically, but we've identified those definite needs.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Please report.
So, you should have in the packet, that one line of data for the month of. January twenty twenty five. Um, we're starting a year over, so your numbers will start over for the beginning. I don't know much. I, I, I would let you know that those numbers. On, it's for winter months, so you typically see, you should see those slide down a little bit. But understand, I'm short two offs. So, that means those two offs are generating more activity. So, again, our numbers are high for this time of year, so. Um, I am excited to say that, uh, and I think we've told you before, we hired an entry level officer, her name is Celeste, uh, Rodriguez. She's in the academy, um, but it's, it's a year process, so. Um, but we were fortunate to, uh, do a conditional offer to a fourteen year police officer. Who, uh, tentatively is scheduled to start on the twenty fourth of this month. Uh, we're in the middle of backgrounds right now, uh, Captain Dean is over. Uh, conducting those backgrounds, uh, done all the sites and all the stuff that we have to do. Uh, we're excited, I know this individual, I think he'll be a good, uh, fit for our team, so.
Any questions?
This individual is from Boardman?
Yes. Any other, any questions?
Uh, I don't have the last month's statistics on it, but four forty-five, I believe, is in right in there, I mean, of, of the last month's. It's good to be in the average, but given which right hand, so. Awesome.
But does seem high. It does seem high.
Our numbers are, are so much higher than they have been. Uh, and that's why we're looking at additional option, just because our numbers are going up. Uh. With growth. Comes good and bad. And, um, our activity is just a lot higher. Thank you.
Building Department.
Good evening. Still, uh, our numbers are in the wintertime slump still, I'm hoping that springtime brings a little increase there. But, uh, we're still holding, holding steady. Any questions?
I thought it was really interesting at the end of the last year, how many new houses, uh, it. Was in the Boardman area, that's really a nice, a nice thing for us.
Yes, agreed.
Forty-nine. Forty-nine.
Forty-nine.
Yeah. So that's why that traffic is. A little intense. Yeah, well, I just, you compare it, you know, Airgen had six new houses. Illam had two, the, the entire county. And, uh, non nine seven eight one eight and outside of Airgen had. Eight. So for the entire rest of the county. By Airgen, there were eight new homes, and we had forty-nine. It's a substantial difference, substantial.
And also, if you, if you drive through those new neighborhoods, um, they're still sold before they're done. Uh, people are starting to buy houses again.
Well, and I was looking just in permits overall. If you take Boardman and the nine seven eight one eight zip code, there's five hundred and six permits. Versus Airgen at forty-three and Moro County outside of nine seven, nine seven eight one eight at a hundred and thirty-nine. We're doing about five times the activity in this end, just in this little enclave of this end.
Well, and also to add to that, the, uh, the county has Amazon projects, which are a huge number of permits.
And it's, and it's still not generating as many, is that what you're saying? Well, most of that work is happening in the nine seven eight one eight zip code. Oh, there you go.
Do you?
It is, yes.
Do you anticipate that this growth is gonna continue to happen? Like, these kind of numbers, and just continue to go up in Boardman specifically?
Yep.
Yeah, yes, and, and the nine seven eight one eight especially.
So, I mean, that is what my next point would be is, uh.
Making sure that we have the proper amenity and services available to, uh, service all of the growth that's coming too, like. We, we need to continue to grow overall, not just homes, but everything.
Absolutely, yep. We need the support of the county to support those services as well. They can't just. Ignore this end.
I just saw a side note, uh, our Boardman schools on three out of the year.
Yes.
Does it actually stick out there? Wow.
I don't know, it kept something.
It's, it's usually precautional, so.
That's just what I was told.
It says on.
Uh, but we worked. Luis.
I don't have the report in front of me, um, but I'll make. I didn't get it.
And so, just teasing, just teasing.
Uh, I just wanna make a few changes to your guys' packet, um. We installed two hundred and twenty radio weeds, um, this month. Um, from the one seventy you have, we have ninety-five left. Uh, we're waiting on a shipment, um, it's been three weeks, so we're hoping to get them next week. Um, our new water building is up and running, we've had a few hiccups, but it's running good so far. That's all I have for you guys.
Well, I will say, since you're here and you and your buddy. I forgot your name already, but, Juan? Okay, thanks.
Yeah, Barrow, yeah, Barrow.
Um, I probably need that, but I did steal it. Um, thank you for everything you're doing, and I already gave you a bad time about, you know, what we have this coming up tonight, but I really do appreciate. All of what you guys do and have done. I don't think I've appreciated you thankful, or thanked you as much for what you did in Columbia with the connection around my house, that was. Um, really, really kind of took care of my wife. And, uh, even though that it wasn't on a, the sewer wasn't on the plans to get hooked to my house. And. You know, it's a long story, but, uh. I will tell people that if you have a problem, call the city and they will do their best to try to help you. Don't be afraid to call the city. Don't be afraid to call the city, they will do what they can. Especially when we had a flood, we went and sucked up all the water. That's what you did, right? You guys went and sucked the water up and we had a whole lot of rain in an area that we got some problems with.
Yeah.
That's taking care of citizens in Boardman. And other cities probably wouldn't do that. And I wanted to thank you guys for doing that, plus you got to use your brand new truck, right?
Yeah. The new back truck?
Yeah.
So.
Nice.
Thank you for everything that you're doing, really. Uh, planning official.
I'm just gonna get, hit a couple highlights, cause Brandon even sent me a text and said, keep it short, so.
Ratted out.
I said real quick, I guess.
I, so, uh, the only pack that hasn't met yet is our EOA pack, and that's gonna happen the end of February. What it looks like right now, um, the comprehensive plans, building, buildings and. Boardman, the delicate code pack met. The twenty-third, we had the open house for the TSP and the Parks Master Plan on the twenty-ninth, I, I thought it was really well attended. Um, both consultant teams said they got a lot of input and information, I can't wait to see that to come back. Um. The TSP pack also met on the twenty-ninth, and that happened. Um, I think that. Um, I appreciate the conversation we had in the workshop, um, and including the planning commission that, I'm looking forward to. Pulling that strategic plan and putting it in front of you and getting your nod as kind of formal approval on that, I think it'll really give us. A focus for what we're doing with everything else. And then I think, this guy's really excited that there's a Burger King come into town. There's a Burger King coming to town, yes, a Burger King, a Burger King and sixteen gas pumps.
That's, that's. We can say that now.
Yeah, I mean, we've had the planning commission public hearing, um, there was no opposition.
Burger King is on the table.
I'm not, I can't worry about his health, I'm just, I'm just so excited.
Was it, is it in Beverly Royal Projects?
It is, yeah, it'll be on the corner right, right here, so, where's it wrong before?
Is that gonna be truck stops?
No, no, this.
Not gonna have truck parking?
Um, I mean, their, their truck will, their, their gasoline.
I mean, for like customers, like, I think that eventually across. My understanding is when they do that development on the.
The other side?
They're supposed to change it similar to what it ended up on.
Yeah.
In front of our.
Like east side?
They asked not to.
They asked, okay, that, I think originally that was in the plan, so.
Actually, if you come over here later and look right here, you will see what the tentative plan is for what we're gonna do.
Does this see the drought pit they have?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I call it a drought pit.
This is their current, this is the lot it's going in, this, this actually shows the design as it's built on this side, and it shows what we're proposing on this side.
Okay.
And so it will facilitate if you're, if you're, if you got your camper trailer behind the truck, you'll be able to park out here. Um, but, and if you're, but if you're a truck driver, the truck parking is around.
Yeah, we're gonna lose our little park?
Just a little.
Just a tiny bit, not very much.
We need to know.
Yeah. Are we still pre-remapping that, uh? Bagging up? It's wrong, yeah.
The, the wagon?
The wagon?
The wagon?
The wagon did not make it when we were moving it, collapsed.
It was pretty old. So are we gonna replace it with another wagon, or just leave it there?
We'll do it with that in the Parks Master Plan.
I don't have, still have a train caboose someplace?
Yes.
Yes, we do.
Yeah, that's out by.
The old sheep.
Yeah.
The other item that is listed under the planning and director update is the next round of the right-of-way license provisions. Um, we're still tracking to bring that in front of you next month for adoption, so if you've got any questions on that, I know you've got a new executive session, I wanna be cognizant of your time, but. Um, we talked about it as staff. And we've also identified, we've done a lot of work in the last three years to address a lot of deficiencies with planning, you know, how we issue permits. You know, trying to apply the standards evenly and act, you know, evenly. Um, we need to get better on the public work side, with making sure that we're actually issuing construction right-of-way permits, those types of things. And the right-of-way license. Ordinance is gonna really help us with that. So, it's, it's, I just, it, things just keep happening and it becomes more and more evident, but that, that piece is gonna be really helpful. To how we, how we manage right-of-way, um, with the data center development around here and the infusion of fiber into right-of-ways. Um, I know there's a lot of fiber that's been put in Wilson and Quincy both. And when we go out there and try to put in water and wastewater pipes. And when we go out there and try to put in water and wastewater pipes, we're gonna have trouble. So managing that going forward is gonna be so critical. To make sure we can get cascade natural gas and U E C and our water pipe and our wastewater pipe down there. Again, if you have any questions between now and next month, please reach out.
City manager.
Yeah. No other, that was all the committee. So we had two people sick for committee reports.
Yeah, I actually, I contacted, um. Taylor White and he's home sick tonight and Stephanie was gonna do another one, step in case our principal planner and she's home with insulin to A, so.
It's going around.
It's going around. People need to get, you need to get well.
Okay, so, oh, uh. The, the PD did just such a cool video showcasing their department and I would like to do something similar. And just to talk about like our E O A and the T S P and the development, all of this stuff that we're working on and put it in a very. Like readable, understandable level, then send it out. So I'm hoping to, if that's a, sounds amiable. I think the cost for that, your video was twenty-seven.
Somewhere in there, right, for a three minute, not a three-minute video.
Yeah, but again, ten thousand views or whatever, I mean, just. If that sounds okay.
I, yeah.
I think that would be a great idea.
I think it would be amazing. Um, probably can't see what enough.
So you should have in your package, the business license ordinance update where we're at. What I'd like to do is have a community input session on March eighteenth. I checked with local areas, I checked with the chamber and that March eighteenth, a good time. The question is, do we do it during the day? Is it businesses? Input.
I would say most businesses are out there close. Between seven and nine. And they're, and are open all day. So, I mean, if you want business input. Difficult to do in the day.
Two, two, okay. I wondered if some people would be able to come in.
Based on most of the business hours, they're long and if it's an individual business hour, usually they're the ones working.
Right. So, like a seven o'clock then, March eighteenth, what day is that?
Tuesday.
Tuesday. Tuesday, so seven P M, March eighteenth, and the thought is an hour. The, the same concept that we have been doing, we'll have it out there around. People come, look at it, give us your thoughts. That sound good? Seven P M?
March eighteen?
March eighteen, okay. Um, we're gonna do a ribbon cutting, um, on February twenty-sixth, that's for the wastewater. That's also, um, the chambers helping with that. But that's at two P M and that's also going to be the dedication for Mary, that building, uh, so will content.
Do you do that what day? Cause I'll have to take personal day, cause I'm not gonna be able to get that long.
Yeah. Feb-February twenty-sixth at two.
Do you expect, always think it's Tuesday other, maybe Tuesday. No, that'd be rude. I just, I just hope I do not get her on that day, cause that means everyone at the state tournament.
Okay.
No, yeah, no, it's just whoever is able to come.
Happy Waterville.
Yes, it's Happy Waterville.
Which is next to the old water.
Yes.
February twenty-sixth, which is down on Marine Drive, right?
The, that's the job thing. Correct, on Marine Drive, doesn't matter.
And you should dedicate it to everyone, sure.
Right?
Nice.
Do you have the contacts for various family and stuff?
I mean, I think I have Brandy's email.
Those doggoes up in Washington. He's got one.
I have Brandy, then, so will. I didn't think I have his brother's phone.
For me.
Yes, we're all in school.
It's a weird scare, right? He's got, he's got, it's, I have it on.
Yeah, I love your. I mean, of course, yeah, she has it on the answering machine. I mean, she's, and if you can stop him, I mean, all you know, they have the whole, it's just.
No.
That his brother would like.
Oh, I'll, I'll get it up. I'll have to, I'll, I'll.
Okay, yeah, Amanda will help with that. Um, hey, uh, the county. The county is.
Did you take a note?
The county will, uh, the county is requesting some input for February nineteenth. Um, to, they're doing a C I T. So they're asking for local entities. Do you need that by, uh? Am I thinking that? Okay, that's, what's the date? No, not.
Now, you talked about doing it tomorrow, but we're doing it in two weeks, so yeah, the nineteenth is correct.
Okay, so just have it before then, before the nineteenth. So if you wanna, there are some things that. I, I know they talk about facilities and stuff, but we're, you know, like Laurel Lane improvements, there's other, you know, health department building improvements, stuff like that. But if you have anything, just let me know and then I'll.
Removal of us?
Is that in their purview?
No, it's not. It fails.
Um, but yeah, if you give me some input before February nineteenth, then great, and you.
We email you?
Yep, send me an email, okay? Right? Um, and this dumb thing. Like complain all you want.
About.
Really? Is that part of what gets started?
So, and, so you guys should have all received any video training thing, okay? And I know you just did it last year. But we are, this year is like we did a practice run and now we're really doing it.
We're not paying money for this, are we?
No. So please just go through the videos. There are some videos that, you know, you can skip through it and like, okay, yes, that sounds good, but please at least view them. Just so we're all on the same page. And then I don't think it's annual. I have a sheet. Some of it's like, I think it's every two years.
Is it more state schools? Is that what you're trying to tell me?
Yes, the same thing you guys did last year, which is really good to do, so it's.
You have a video every year?
Yeah, it is the same.
Same.
So is this the email I received from P I S and ignored? Oh, yes, I.
I might as well.
That people?
Well, I noticed it today.
Somebody, you know.
Well, I, I know it's a mistake, so I remember it.
Has to be done by March?
March first, yeah.
Let me ask you.
No.
Oh.
Next.
I like that signal, that works for me.
Is that all you have, Brandon?
Okay. Oh, oh, yeah, look, it is. So, um, we did submit a request to the county. Um, the O D O asked the city to request the county for seventy thousand dollars. So when they're redoing the bridge on Tower Road to do like a, like a design. So that will, that will be presented to the county, I think.
Tomorrow, it's on the agenda for tomorrow.
Yeah.
So does that, when you mean like, uh, the designs or?
Something.
Make it look cool?
Yeah.
Yeah, at least better than what we have.
Yes, which is.
And it's, yeah. It's not our, it's not our funds. We are just asked to.
But then Carl Junior signed on it or loves or something.
No.
So.
Or, or, or calving horses like at Epple's Dairy Field or I, I love the thing to, uh.
Yeah.
My big fish, I do, in the down.
I do like that idea.
Yeah, fish at the dowels or the baked one is phenomenal. We're not gonna get that, if they're just, very.
Who, who has input on what goes on?
That is the county.
It would be, it would be the county's money. They would have input on what would could go on there.
Well, maybe that could be something we could have volunteered to tell them about the nineteenth.
Certainly.
Well, they have to make the money, they have to make the decision to fund before that date.
That's tomorrow, the nineteenth is our suggestion.
Correct, but they, yeah, they have to, if the turnaround.
You just know my suggestions, that's, yeah, don't worry.
Yeah, like us.
Well, I haven't thought about it.
Um.
A north end theme, probably.
Yeah, would be nice, yeah.
A north end theme, whatever that might be. I, I, I wouldn't want a Mustang on it.
It'd be a great place to say welcome to moral county. I mean, you know.
Oh, yeah, that would be delightful.
That could mean. However, the county lines way further.
Way further that way and, but it's, you know.
Something.
But that would be.
Is that considered Boardman's?
North End County, but I mean, I.
No.
No.
No, it's outside of schools and it's like a town, but.
Um, and the other thing is, S C I filings are gonna be coming up.
I haven't seen the email for that yet.
Yeah, you should. And I haven't seen one either.
People are not even, they just, you have.
Due, they're due April fifteenth, but the email comes to us more like thirty, about the middle of.
It's, it's due, yeah, it's due April fifteenth and they were fine. Repeat it.
But they found you?
As Brandon.
Fine, yeah.
No, that's fine, fine. I mean.
Thank you, oh, fine, no.
Like charge money.
Yes.
I have, I have been contacted by the group saying that communications will be going out, so they are making sure. That I am notifying you. We are notifying you to do it.
I want to say the previous city manager did remind us once that did come out.
Yeah, I, as soon as it comes out, she did. I.
No standard to, uh.
Yeah.
I like it from, from, uh, she's.
Oh, you're talking, scuffle my notes.
I never did, I got fined twice.
I don't think that's, I don't think the areas did. I'm very much.
Yeah, no.
Biting out her email.
And that's all I know.
Right. Go for it, yeah. Counselors, are you done? Thank you. Counselor comments. That's two talks.
The only comment I have is for Luis. Uh, thank you. Oscar Rossi. Thank you for what I've been doing there. Thank you. I was. Um, I just wanna say, you know, as we go through this every single month, I do enjoy. The process of new development. Potential new development, the things that possibly could be in store for our, our citizens as we go along and I, I'm excited, like. You know, I haven't lived here as long as Karen now, but I, I probably, you know, or Heather, but I've lived here longer than a lot of people and. You know, I remember when there was nothing, you know, I remember, what was it? We did have a caboose in town, remember? It was, it was at where Dave Jones has a food court down. Used to be a clothing store. So I remember, I remember those things and, and then it went away and then, you know, and then there was like a big lull of nothing for a long time. And now all of a sudden we're moving forward very quickly and, and, and it's kind of nice to finally see that stuff is starting to move forward in our county. I think. Once that stuff really starts to come in place, uh, our citizens here are gonna really appreciate it. This takes time and money, obviously.
I have a comment. I do too. So we go first, one second. Um, with public works, I didn't, um. Get a chance to, to ask the question and it wasn't really a question. Um, but, um, I mean. Um, looking at all of the growth in Boardman, I think similar to how we looked at, um, the need for additional law enforcement. I think that that is also something that we will also be looking at in the near future is, um, are we fully staffed? For all of the growth, um, in public works and, um. You could disagree with me, um, but, you know, and then also looking at, are we, you know, are we doing things as efficiently and, you know, all of those things, which I think is in the works, um, as well. But I did wanna just make a comment on that because I know when we are under staff right now. Um, and so I mean, appreciate all the work that you are doing.
And staying here at nine o'clock at night?
Yes.
I wanna know about chickens. So we had people approach me about chickens. I wanna know when the chickens are gonna be good to have in city limits and all that jazz.
No, that's a very consideration. That's, that's a good one. Thank you.
I think we need to.
Twelve dollars for a twelve pound.
Twelve dollars for a twelve pack of eggs. There's some chicken tops.
Just give me a, yes, we're definitely, it is.
Just buying food, buying some chickens.
It is a high priority when, when.
But eggs are thirteen dollars a dozen.
Yeah.
Well, because eggs are sort of a staple and you need them for just about everything.
I don't need eggs for thirteen bucks a dozen.
But I think that I'm starting to be worried about bird flu because who's gonna monitor? You know, the, the, you know, everybody's got, we gotta protect everybody on the deal. And, you know, you see that even people are starting to get, you know. Infected with.
My dog just got a bird flu.
Hey, really?
I'm dead serious.
Yeah. So.
I'm dead, I'm dead serious.
Yeah, so, so this is it. I was all hot about this and thought it was a great idea like six or eight months ago. But now that people are actually, you know, slaughtering millions of chickens. Uh, what's our liability?
Yeah.
I mean. Somebody else can worry about this, yeah.
It's a good point, like it is what we do.
That is.
It's a huge deal right now.
And you do, it's like, who, who monitors that because.
Yeah.
For these factors.
But if you live next to me, you got chickens and I got bad air.
We're picking up, uh, three, four birds a day at, at heart.
Bees?
Bees. Bees, yeah.
That might be a win, George.
But they're all chickens, yeah.
There are, there's chickens down there that are one, two.
Yeah. Really?
Yes.
We have a delay. We have a delay.
For you.
You're gonna have three hours delay.
That's what.
Okay, are we, do we have any more counselor comments? So I have a, uh, a mayor comment and this is for the county, the county commissioners. Uh, as mayor, I wrote down some things to try to make sure that I'm not as. Sharp and I'm not as. Yeah, I'm just gonna, cause I, I just say what, the way it is. I, I'm disheartened and, uh. Disappointed from the move of the courthouse. Uh. It appears that that move is based on votes. That's my, um, political for, politics for votes. Um. And it really is again, another feeling for Boardman, why Boardman is a financial engine that gets nothing. I mean, just take a look at what we got the county buildings in here. And, uh, I, and all I ask and I hope is that the two commissioners who voted for that are. Financially responsible. I would sure hope that that building. Over yonder. Is about the same money as the one that was gonna be here. Um, that would be really sad that a building that was gonna be on your land already. Ends up costing twice as much just because a bunch of people in Hepburn get mad and feel shafted. Well. Being the financial, feels like we're the financial engine as you hear all the stuff that's going on and, uh. So. I, I just hope that we're financially responsible with money as we go out and we try to. Do what's best for the county and that's all I, that's all I ask. Yeah, uh, so go to our executive session. O R S one ninety-two point six six zero two E to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to negotiate real property transactions. Do we expect to have a decision?
Possible.
We could possibly have a decision when we come out. Therefore, we're gonna, we're gonna pause this meeting for our executive session. Okay, we are back from, uh, executive session, so I'll resume this meeting. Uh, Mr. Ethan, he had to, uh, leave for his job, so we are, excuse, but we're still out of form. And do we have anything we need to discuss about?
Do we need to make a motion?
Yeah, if we have a decision to make, we need to make a motion. So I move that we.
Could. Negotiate for the potential sale of. Three lots.
Or the potential sale on Front Street.
Okay, the potential sale of on Front Street, that's our thing.
Great, so I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
A motion, a second. Do we have any discussion we'd like to have at this time?
Which front street can I ask? No, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have been working, nor teach Front Street.
Is that word better for you, it's gonna be Front Street for your minutes?
Because do we have to declare the lot? I was just going to ask, do you want to declare the lot numbers? So forty, it would be two, three and four.
Oh, yeah, it's two, you have two hundred, three or four.
Two, three and four hundred?
Yep.
Dave, does the second, uh, agree to that amended motion?
I do.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. Aye, give me a pose. Alright, so the city council meeting is adjourned.
Your documents are signed, correct?
Do you need that?
Yeah.
It's not there. Uh, I.
So, what do you?